Good early evening, everyone. Welcome to our Doylestown Township Administrative Meeting Room for our meeting tonight. Before the start of the regular meeting, we had a budget work session. This is our fourth, I believe, maybe our fifth. We're moving right along through a five-year plan, beginning with the 2020 budget. And also, before the start of today's meeting, we had a meeting in an executive session where we discussed some personnel and real estate matters. Before the regular meeting tonight, we're going to have, is the auditor here? We're going to have the swearing-in of Kelly Gallardi, our township auditor, who's, come on up. She'll be sworn in by Jackie Rowland. She's replacing a non-expire term. Please speak into the microphone, both of you. Thank you. All right, so you want to see? Do you have someone here with you, Kelly, that would like to hold your Bible?
A child?
Your child is fine.
I do, I have two sons here.
Bring them on up.
Okay, I'll bring up James. James, come on up. And Jack, can you please videotape? Is that okay?
Yes, absolutely. They can both hold it.
Okay.
Okay. James, will you hold this? Perfect. Okay, ready?
I'm ready.
I, Kelly Gallardi, do solemnly swear, that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of this Commonwealth. And that I will discharge the duties of auditor in Doylestown Township Bucks County with fidelity. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Does she have to sign something?
Yes. Yes, Jackie's going to take her to sign documents.
Very good. You want to bring your children with you? Yeah. Thank you, Jackie. Congratulations, Ms. Auditor.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to the presentation from PennDOT, the roundabout gentleman here. What do you need? You want to take the microphone podium there?
All right, well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for having us tonight. My name is Kurt Vendetti, I'm the consultant project manager here.
You may have to speak closer to the microphone, I'm sorry.
Sure, can everybody hear me?
Perfect, yes, thank you.
Hi, so my name is Kurt Vendetti, I'm the consultant project manager here from PennDOT, and we're here to discuss the proposed roundabout project at the intersection of Easton Road and New Britton Road. This presentation will serve as a follow-up to the meeting that we had last year in March with the township. We've looked into a number of points as a result of that meeting, which we'll discuss with today's presentation. Just to let you know who's here also from PennDOT, we have our consultant, Urban Engineers, here with us as well, as well as Vince and Shirang from PennDOT Traffic Unit here tonight to help support this discussion. So, thank you for coming tonight.
Now, when you move away from that microphone, we can't hear you, so you have to stay with your face in front of the microphone.
Yes, ma'am, I'll try my best.
I know, thank you.
All right. So, at this point, for the project, construction funding is programmed under the Highway Safety Improvement Program, which is 100% federal-funded for this. And with support from the project stakeholders, we will have design move forward and also construction planned for 2021, I'm sorry, 2022, with a let date of 2021 in December. We're thinking we'll have one construction season for this project. So with that, I'll turn things over to Urban at this point to discuss some of the project details with the presentation.
All right, thanks, Kurt. My name's Michael Mustalio, I work for Urban Engineers. Thanks for having us back, it's been a little while since we've met. I remember it being in the field trailer, so this is a really nice digs you have here, and thank you for having us. I think one thing I wanted to say is that we brought our whole team of experts and PennDOT folks here to show how much commitment we have to hopefully getting this project moving forward. There's a lot of us here tonight to support. So, that said, I wanted to kind of get into the quick agenda here, revisit the roundabout, district-wide roundabout program that we talked about last time, give you an update on those crash comparisons, that seemed to be a major point of topic of discussion last time, and then get into, compare some of those crashes along with where we are in the preliminary engineering phase, or study phase, correct, right now? And then, one of the other major topics that we wanted to kind of go over with you is a preliminary construction scheme, to show you how this project would get built. So, real quick, the district-wide roundabout program was started in 2017 by PennDOT District Six. If you look down in the bottom right there, the schematic shows District Six comprises of five counties. Bucks County is one of the five, and we've been hot and heavy working on roundabout projects starting back in, I guess, early 2018, when we were under agreement. The district was awarded Competitive Highway Safety Improvement Funds through a competitive selection process, and as you know, one roundabout project was selected for each county, and we're hot and heavy on all four of the other ones, except in Bucks County. So, for the last 10 to 12 months, we've been working on preliminary engineering for the other four projects. Real quick, as you know, this is a data-driven process, we looked at T-bone and rear-ended accidents, and we went through this prism here of criteria and screenings to select top candidates. Right now, that triangle on the right represents where we are with the program, preliminary engineering. Timeline here, just kind of reiterate what we talked about, the intersections that we studied, specifically yours, had 20-angle crashes, which kind of put it in that top 10%, top 5% of the county. And so, vetting that through with the county planning partners, as well as the PennDOT engineering folks in the safety unit, we were able to kind of move forward and eventually rank this two out of five. And then, from there, we met and discussed, and we came out to see you, tried to present a rough concept on, and showing how the impacts and the benefits. So, in early 2019, spring, we revised that concept, we received the Tabor tract information, and then we also proceeded with some of the preliminary roundabout design checks that we used to make sure that the roundabouts worked properly. And then, this summer, we actually obtained some right-of-way data, we actually received the updated crash data from PennDOT, and then we were able to evaluate those crashes and then come up with a traffic control scheme, we call it, and as well as, you know, kind of identify some of the key elements to the project, like storm water management, and where we would put impacts, where the impacts would be. So, this slide right here kind of shows some of the updated crashes. It's segregated by the two intersections. On the west, we have Southeaston and New Britton Road, exhibit between 2012 and 2018, 12, or 16-angle crashes with a rough average daily traffic, so that means about 7,000 vehicles are going through this intersection on a daily basis. The east one, as you can imagine, is almost identical with the same traffic, with nine angle crashes. So, I'm going to turn it over to Andrew, he's one of our crash experts, he is able to get into the weeds here and try to answer some of the questions that Mr. Colallo had, and as well as the rest of the board. Andrew?
Yeah. Is this good, can you hear me?
Nope.
No?
Bring it up, so you can kick a little closer.
A little taller than Mike. Is this better?
Thank you.
All right, perfect. All right, so one of the big sticking points from last time around was midway through our analysis period of 2013 to 2017, in the year 2015, PennDOT put in some low-cost safety improvement, which may have had some effect on the data that we were analyzing. So, we wanted to compare the crashes before the low-cost improvement and the crashes after, to see if there was any effect, to help with the justification of the project. So, this was the original condition before PennDOT put in their low-cost safety improvements. As you can see, there's left-turn lanes on the north and southbound, as well as on New Britton Road. PennDOT, these are the plans that they put together, so they were striping out those left-turn lanes, putting in intersection approach pavement markings in an effort to bring more awareness of the intersection. The reason they took away the left-turn lanes was to eliminate some of those conflict points. The more lanes you have, the more conflict points you have, the more possibility you have for crashes, which was the intent of the project. So, you can see, this is the aerial for 2015, after those improvements were installed. This is what we have out there today, and when we start looking to the crashes, we looked at the three years before and the three years after. Since we only have three years from 2015 to 2018, you want to do an apples-to-apples comparison before and after the project was implemented. We did it from May of 2012 to April of 2015, because the project was implemented in May of 2015. When we look at the total number of crashes, the crashes reduced from 13 to 12, so some, but not significant, certainly not to the level that we would like to see for the savings in crashes. One point to note was, all of the crashes didn't, the types of crashes and the reasons for the crashes didn't change. 100% of the crashes were angle, and they were either caused by running of stop signs or proceeding without clearance, so very similar reasons for those crashes occurring. When we look at this in a crash diagram, you can see the number and location, as well as the type of crashes that were occurring. So, you can see, you have people colliding with those southbound travelers, as well as people coming northbound to the east. That's your 13 total before, and this is your 12 crashes after. So, again, very similar types of crashes, very similar causes to those types of crashes, so not, unfortunately, not a significant change from those low-cost safety improvements. Now, I'll hand it back over to Mike.
Thanks, Andrew. So, if you remember, the reason this is a solid roundabout candidate site is because roundabouts reduce conflict points and severity of crashes, because we're able to keep the speeds through slow. And when we look at the total number of vehicles traveling through these two intersections, we're at a very low threshold for single-lane roundabouts. So, even though there's a perceived perception that it is a busy intersection, the roundabouts here will last for many, many years with lots of development. And so, if we get into the project, we can run a sensitivity analysis to find out when that threshold would be, but these roundabouts will have lots of flexibility to incur additional So, again, just real quick, this is just really a repeat from last time, these issues were the high crash histories, the higher speeds, you have 45 miles an hour going north and south on Easton, 25 on the side roads with the stop controls, so people have to stop to go through east-west. There's poor visibility associated with the intersections. In some cases, we see it hard to make judgments for vehicles to cross those higher speeds of speeded volumes. And then, we noticed how much bike and ped activity there is around in the surrounding neighborhoods on east and west, so this project, I think, could really benefit from additional pedestrian and bicycle activities, not to mention the Route 55 bus that has a stop in both directions. So, this is our updated concept. We overlaid the Tabor Home site plan on here. As I mentioned, the roundabouts are a proven safety countermeasure, the Federal Highway Administration is really using as a countermeasure to T-bone accidents, and it's a self-mitigating speed, so you just physically will not be able to travel through these intersections at more than 20 to 25 miles an hour, unless you might have a Corvette and maybe 30, 35. But, the point is, is that it's very low movement, or very low speeds, and when you reduce the speeds, you reduce the severity of the accident, and your, people are more able to judge gaps in and out of the intersection. I will also mention, this is a huge gateway opportunity for the borough and for the township coming in and out of these roads from the one-way pair, where there's lots of studies that have come out now about roundabouts benefiting businesses, it's a great way to advertise as a place, a meeting point, and then, of course, we have Triangle Park, which is this resource that we, in our observations, feel like could use, you know, I don't see a lot of use there, there's not a lot of people visiting, and I think it's because it's this island between these higher-speed roadways. And so, this project will be huge to help connect those communities on east and west, build off of the Tabor Home, as well as provide a safe way of crossing these two major routes. One of the things we also do is we try to fit the project within the existing limits. So, the brown areas here represent our project limits as of today. We have resources that we need to be very careful to avoid or mitigate, starting with the Tabor Home, so if this home goes away, then this might not be a resource we have to study, depending on when the timeline of the development. The Triangle Park is another major resource, we call it a 4F, it could potentially be a 6F property. And then, there's a chance for checking out Bog Turtles, or any of the streams from the Cheminy Creek. One of the things we did after we honed in and received our right-of-way lines and were able to hone in on it, is we do a roundabout design check. With Vince and his crew, we are able to go through and show how large trucks, how the speeds are slow, and how there's proper intersection site distance. This diagram here really just represents how the trucks, which is a WB62 for any engineered geeks that want to know, it's a larger tractor-trailer, and so, we are not precluding those movements in all cases. So, this is a way of showing that, it shows the truck turning template over the geometry. We also check for fastest paths and document those. These are our fastest path checks in a diagram form, which kind of shows how fast you can drive through the roundabout. And then, last but not least, is those intersection site distances that I was mentioning earlier, and those are some of the problematic signs that we have on the existing condition. All right, so I think the main point of our conversation tonight was to revisit the crashes, but also show you what we've done to hone in on our design, and now, it's to talk about the constructability aspects of it. And I brought my other specialist, the other Andrew here, who worked on the staging. We haven't vetted this through the PennDOT process, because ultimately, we're waiting for the township to agree and endorse this project. So, with that said, I'm going to show you a preliminary scheme, so we can show you and answer some of those questions that the business owners that were present at the last meeting asked. All right, Andrew?
I'll go to the taller Mike. Can everyone, can you hear me okay?
Let's pull the mic up a little closer.
All right.
Or just lift it up closer to your mouth.
Oh, it goes up, got it. Okay, so how are we going to build this thing? There are a few critical components we're looking at, I mean, in a contractor's ideal world, they would want to detour this whole section, but realistically, that's not feasible. So, Urban is suggesting maintaining access on Southeaston Road, both northbound and southbound, and we are going to propose partial detours, or we suggest partial detours for the minor legs, which is New Britton Road and Sowerman Road. This first stage, basically, we're just doing some minor temporary widening, so we can shift traffic as far away from the center of the roundabouts as possible. It's ideal if we can construct a majority of the roundabout first, and then put traffic on the roundabout while we construct the other pieces. As you can see on the map, there are green circles, it's probably a little difficult to see, but they're little As, those are access points on the job site. If you see one that's red, that means it's going to be closed for a portion of the construction, and I'll kind of briefly explain those. We also have some flow arrows, but I'll try to show you guys with my mouse. So, in the next stage, we're going to shift all traffic onto that newly constructed temporary pavement. Let's see. So, southbound Eastern Road is just going to shift left, and we're going to construct the majority of this purple area, that's going to be all final design. You're going to see this orange detour, so New Britton Road is now closed with a partial detour. We mapped out two detour routes, one utilizing all-state routes, which is a little over six miles, and then, we actually drove one tonight, which was a little bit more ideal, but we have some hoops to jump through, because it's utilizing a couple township roads, one of them being right out front, right here. One of the hurdles for the construction staging is maintaining southbound lane on this southeastern quadrant, Eastern Road. We have a few businesses down here and a couple residences that we need to maintain access to. So, for this stage, we close all of New Britton Road in the middle, however, we maintain one lane going eastbound to access those properties. And then, we are constructing a majority of the roundabouts in front of the gateway center. Shifting, this is the detour map that we are proposing, the green boundary is utilizing all PennDOT state routes, which is normal practice for PennDOT. There is an alternate route, which we will investigate and try to see if that's plausible. It's this orange boundary right here, and that's utilizing Wells Road and Turk Road. Shifting into the next stage, now we have traffic shifted onto the newly constructed roundabout for the southbound Eastern Road, for northbound, now we're shifting them all the way to the left, and we're going to construct the eastern part of the roundabout. For this portion, Sowerman Road is closed, however, we will still, we still will maintain access for the Doylestown Commerce Center, however, their right-out exit right here needs to be closed, however, it's not really that critical, since they have access point, they have two other access points further up Eastern Road. And again, as part of this stage as well, we are maintaining this southbound movement to the southeastern quadrant. And then, shift into the last and final stage, now a majority of the construction's in front of Triangle Park. I have a red X in front of Triangle Park, but ideally, we can probably get the contractor to shift his phases to allow the parking lot for Triangle Park to remain open. We still have partial detours for Sowerman Road, since they cannot make the through movement. We looked at that, and it's low, pretty low-traffic numbers making this through movement, so we didn't see that as being a major issue, and again, we will be detoring that, so. Then, I'm going to pass it back over to Mike, he's going to briefly talk about our anticipated project schedule if we decide to move forward, along with a letting date.
Thanks, Andrew. So, the orange bar here represents where we are today, September, October 2019. Usually, preliminary engineering projects take 12 months, 12 to 18 months, with some of the resources we have on-site, we might need 18 months. What we achieve in preliminary engineering is a 30% design, along with a CE document, which is a category exclusion, basically, our environmental clearance. We follow the NEPA process, because it is federally funded. And then, from there, we can jump into final design and right-of-way and utility coordination. Again, being about a 12-month duration, we're not anticipating any total takes or any sort of displacements, we think we can get away with minor temporary construction easements. Again, we'll have to hone in on that when we get to that 30% level. And then, if everything goes as planned, we hope to advertise the project to contractors in the late winter of 2021, and that will utilize one full construction season. And with the partial detour, we feel strongly that we'll be able to get in and out, and I think that's where I'd like to end the presentation. So, here's another picture of the concept, but we are now going to turn it over to you all here and answer any comments, or listen to any comments, questions. Our chief guy, Vince Serbone, is here. Vince is running this whole program, he's taken this on head-on, and he's really our champion and our spokesperson for this program. So, he came here to answer any questions that us consultants might not be able to answer.
Okay, we'll open up to the board, questions?
Looking at your schedule, I saw it was 12 months for, is that all three stages?
For construction?
Yes.
That's what we're, yes, that's what we're proposing.
So, those detours, it'll be four months, on average, then, for each of them?
Not necessarily.
Ideally, we were trying to open up access as soon as we could, so, I mean, just to kind of show you, in this stage, for instance, stage four, we needed to construct a little portion of this roundabout here, so we cannot maintain access through, so we would still have the partial detour. And we did a rough preliminary schedule, but again, we would look at that for our 30% submission.
Other questions? John, you have anything?
Yeah, so I looked at some of the accident data before our meeting, and it looked like in 2017, we had one, in 2018, we had two, in 2019, we had one. One of the outlier years was, I think, used in your initial study, that was 2014, where we had the most amount, eight accidents at those sites. Taking that outlier out, would we still qualify for the program, would we be a place of interest if we took that one year out to look at the?
I'd say, another outlier was 2016, we had six, which was the year immediately after the safety improvements, almost seven months after the safety improvements were done, you had a full year, and that was still six crashes. And on average, within like the 10 years, you had like three to four per year, but there were some outliers, I believe 2014 was eight, and 2016 was six. But, again, like, part of crashes, what makes crashes so difficult is they are random, there is some random chance. I mean, if we could predict a crash, then we would be able to stop that crash from happening. So, there is some fluctuation, which is why we use those larger time periods. PennDOT typically likes to use five years, but unfortunately, we don't have five years, we have those three years, which is why we were using those as a comparison.
Right, but these would be, still be considered outstanding, like an outstanding area for you to look at, even if we were to take those outliers?
Correct.
I'd just like to correct the crashes. I speak a lot louder, so. The crashes that were shown on that, they are a little bit off, so like you were saying, there actually is a five-crash difference, not, I believe you should too, so.
The 13 to the 12?
13 to 12, so, there, it actually is a five-crash difference. I apologize for that.
It's reduced by five since, since the initial analysis?
So after, it, it, the, the low-cost safety treatment went in on May 12th of 2015. So like Andrew said, we can only go three years before and after to give a true before-and-after study. And so after we were at nine, before, we were at 16. So it's actually, you know, six-crash difference. So I don't know where, I think these guys, what we gave these guys, and it's my fault, not theirs, what we gave them is, PennDOT had a problem getting our crash data released in 2018. So we couldn't release the crashes until everything was looked at or sure everything was in. That is typically in April of 2018. This year, we had problems doing that. So we didn't actually release the 2018 crash data until the end of August of this year. So, you know, that's why the data's different. But so.
But saying that, it's still qualified.
It did come down to five crashes, right? What, what you need now is that roundabouts are, are safer than any type of intersection you can get. You have, and a roundabout will reduce, no question, all fatalities by 90%. And in our district, we're looking at even above that. So if you look at the roundabouts that are existing in this district, we're above 90%. We're at 80% force, any serious injury. And you're looking at about a 60% reduction in all crashes. So there's no question, we won't design anything above 25 miles per hour. We're going to drive through this intersection at 25 miles per hour. That, just that alone is going to, any impact that would happen would be a lot less severe than it would be if you have the condition that it is, especially to a pedestrian, right? A pedestrian above 30 miles per hour is a serious accident, so.
My, my other question is that there's, you're planning on two roundabouts, one after the other. I've never actually seen that much in practice. Where else do we have a demonstration of that being an effective way of using roundabouts?
Oh, I would say roundabouts that close together are fairly common further west. I mean, roundabouts are a fairly new intersection control for Pennsylvania. But we looked at these individually, using CIDRA, which is our intersection capacity analysis, to make sure they wouldn't queue into each other, which is a major concern when you have intersect, well, any type of intersection close together. But because there's no conflicting traffic with people who are in, in between them, you have very short queues for those individuals that are in between them. As far as examples, there are a few, I want to say New Stanton's the one that comes to mind as well, that's further west, as well as SR 519. But 519 is more of a hybrid roundabout, which is not what we have in this, in this, in this case.
Was there ever a consideration of just doing the one side where New Britton Road is? It seems to be that's where most of the crash activity is, and, and using other, other mechanisms for safety on the other side where Sowerman is?
I guess I'd ask you, what's, what would be the benefit of, of just doing one versus two? I mean, in, in reality, it's actually one big intersection, so they actually act as one intersection. The only difference is that we're providing full access in the circulatory roadway. A lot of times, what we'll see is a teardrop, which is jargon for two roundabouts side by side. You'll see these a lot at interchanges, where you might have a, a grade-separated intersection, and where the on- and off-ramps come to the end, we would see roundabouts there. So if you just envisioned a, a big bridge going up and down this graphic here, you know, it would basically act as, it's acting as one intersection. We're, we kind of just did this dumbbell, per se, or teardrop, because we're trying to minimize impacts. But you could, if you didn't have these, these resources here, you could, you could do one big roundabout or an oval. But I, I wouldn't see too much benefit than do, just doing one versus the other. I think they, they act holistically, they kind of work together, and they really are just one intersection, if you think about it.
One la, one last question I had was for Triangle Park. You're right, there's not a lot of activity, at least I drive this intersection across it often. There's not a lot of activity that I see at Triangle Park, but when you put this in, how is, it looks like it'll make it very difficult to access. Maybe not more so than it is now, but you've got constantly moving traffic. So how would you access the parking lot?
From a vehicular perspective?
Yes.
So, mouse coming up here. If you can see the mouse here, if you're coming from west to east, there is actually like a, this is like a three-lane section, so there is like a two-way left-turn lane in the center there, so you can turn left here. The other option, it would be to use the roundabout to make a U-turn to access this. So maybe the route might be a little longer. But like I was saying, on this part of the roundabout and this part of the roundabout, you really don't have anybody conflicting you, which when you have a roundabout, that means there's nobody stopping you. So if you're coming this way, you'd still have to slow down, but there'd be nobody to yield to. And because once you got into the circulatory roadway, everyone else would have to yield to you. So maybe a longer path, but it would be easier overall.
Thank you.
I don't know if that answered your question. I think the connectivity for the bikes and the peds is the huge advantage. These are yield controls, so there's not a lot of stopping. It's just a very slow, organic movement, if you want, if you will. But I think because the speeds are slower, the peds and the bikes, they're going to feel more comfortable crossing the traffic stream, and I think that's one of the big problems why people don't use Triangle Park, is it's kind of cut off. There's, there's walking paths, trails all around this area, and it's amazing. It's really nice luxury, and I think Eastern Road really kind of segregates the ability to go across. I mean, we have, we've seen guys, or excuse me, patrons get off the 55 and have to like dodge traffic to cross and get back to the west side. So I think it's just a really great opportunity to provide these slower speeds and make people feel more comfortable and use, use it maybe from a more of a multimodal standpoint.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Any questions down there?
Only because I, I was the only one that descended last time, as you know. And I felt then, many issues, and you know all of them, but one of the ones is we could improve this without spending millions of dollars. And I think you support that by saying, you know, the accidents are down 50%, and there's maybe even some more improvements we can make. And just, it, it's, it's not, some of us look like it's for free. It's not for free. It's our tax dollars. And if that's one of the worst intersections in the county and in the state, then, I mean, we're, six accidents? I, I, I just can't support this kind of disruption. And as you know, there's a large learning curve. And in fact, the statistics show the first year or two, accidents will increase. Might, not as, not as serious, but a little bit more fender benders because they're not sure if they go in now or do they go out, who's got the right of way? There's a large learning curve. And to move 14,000 cars for a year around there, I think it's really going to be a challenge for all the residents, and, and I won't belabor it. I'm, I'm the only one that I think dissent, so appreciate your time.
Do you have anything, Ryan? Anybody else up here? Chief?
Well, excuse me. I'm assuming that your accident statistics are reportable accidents, which are injury-related or telling requirements. Is, and it's kind of a, off of what Mr. Colallo said, is there any long-term statistics available to show us if there's an increase in low-speed accidents, which are just as time-consuming for us to investigate sometimes as the reportables?
So your question is, do we have statistics on low-speed crashes?
Will this increase the number of low-speed crashes because of the number of cars that are coming in here and merging and?
I, I would, I mean, I'm not going to get in a debate match here, but I think some of the paraphrasing Mr. Colallo had, I, I would not agree with. I think the fact is, is we test learning how to drive a roundabout like riding a bike. Once you go through it once or twice, it's really self-explanatory. The other thing I will say is that people become more aware. It's, you know, this is one of, I don't know if you're familiar with Vision Zero, but this is a, a measure that would be consistent with what Philadelphia is trying to achieve.
I, I understand it. My que, my question's very simple, though. Is there any statistics available to show whether or not low-speed crashes increase, decrease, or stay the same?
With the implementation?
With the implementation of a roundabout.
I'm not aware of any.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from here? Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, the, the, one of the questions that I have, and, and we've looked at this, you know, and worked with PennDOT, the, the chief, myself, and in this intersection, we're all aware of the issues. The first question I have is, were any traffic signal warrant analysis conducted at these intersections in lieu of the roundabouts? Because, you know, as we know, that another intersection, if, if a solution would be a signalized intersection, that's a, that is a, a long-term cost for us in perpetuity because we don't take traffic signals out. So maybe you could speak to that, if that analysis was conducted, and were there any recommendations if this were not to be constructed?
We did not con, conduct, conduct a traffic signal warrant analysis. However, based off of the intersection ADD being well below the threshold where you might expect a signal to be expected, we wouldn't expect it to warrant. And again, for PennDOT, that requires like three different warrants, like eight-hour, four-hour, and a peak hour.
Including, including the possibility of development of the taper property as well?
I believe, I believe so.
Okay.
No, 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 no.
My name is Velaga. Anybody who's interested in knowing how this roundabout works, if you Google on YouTube, it's called Dogbone Roundabout. And I can email a link where you could actually see the video of its functioning. There's one in Virginia, near us, in Fairfax County. And, and I need to send you the link, whole link, then you guys can see. Probably, well, Mike or Kurt can send it to you.
Thank you. That's a good idea.
You can do it, just say Dogbone Roundabout on YouTube.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions from up here? You go, Jeff? All right, any questions from the folks out there in the audience? Sir, please come forward. Identify yourself to the microphone right there, please. And as you've been paying attention, you guys speak into the mic.
I understand.
Thank you.
My name's Matthew Conway, 578 New Britton Road, right there on the corner.
Can you say your name again?
Matthew Conway, 578 New Britton Road. The closest one to the New Britton Eastern Road intersection, right there, yes. I just have two points. One is with the accidents. Now, what we counted was accidents, is actually two vehicles hitting each other. I wish I had a way to count and quantify for you the amount of tire screeches I hear weekly or daily, right? Those are the close calls that we're never going to capture, which thankfully, it's not an accident. But my only other point, as we go into the planning process, is I'll have 7,000 cars now turning towards my home, and I'm just worried about like headlights and things like that. Will there be a natural barrier as the, the planning progresses if this goes forward? Trees or something?
Sure, we could certainly do something for you in that application on other projects. We've done landscape berms or planting, something of that nature, so we could work with you through that process. Come up with something that doesn't create a nuisance for your property.
Right, I understand we're early, but I just, as we're, if we get to that planning portion, if that's in the back of your mind, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. That's all.
Before you leave, are you advocating for or against?
For, I'm very for. I think, in my opinion, I believe this will make that whole area a more park-like setting. That, the whole area, it'll improve the area, I believe that with the bicycle traffic, even me walking my dog personally, things like that. I go left, I don't go right, and there's a lot of nice things right, including Triangle Park, and I just don't do it.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Matt. You, you spoke the last time as well, and I think he had a similar opinion, and I think it's, it's, it's hard, there's no reports for near misses, so I think that's a valid point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Ma'am, come on up and take the microphone, please. And then, sir, you can go, you can follow.
Hi, my name is Bernadette Willig. I live at 566 New Britton Road on the second house in. One of my big concerns is, we've always had an issue trying to get out of our driveway on New Britton Road. The speed limit is 35. I'm lucky if people go 35. Most of the time, it's 45, 50, and I'm trying not to get killed coming out my driveway. Is anything going to change with the speeds, like on New Britton, on, on New Britton Road? Or is it still going to be 35?
So Bernadette, you also came to the mic last time as well, and so you were worried about a queue of traffic backing up into your driveway so you could get in and out. And so I appreciate you coming up because we actually did look at that after we, you spoke, and we're anticipating one to two car lengths on the eastbound traffic for, for New Britton. And so being yield control and the fact that you just can't drive straight through the intersection, the speeds will slow down. There will no, there not be any reduction in speed limit signs, however, the advisory is to, to travel slower through, through the roundabout. They're self-mitigating with them being curbed, you're just not able to physically drive through.
Is there going to be any kind of markings as people are getting to that? Do they know it's coming up?
Correct.
Part of my problem is, we're right where the hill crests. So as I'm trying to pull out, people don't know I'm coming, and I can't always see them depending on how fast they're going.
Yes, there's advanced warning signs and guide signs that are posted ahead of time to give proper notice. And that's one of the checks that I showed tonight, was those intersection sight distance calculations. So those, to be able to see the roundabout as you approach it is a key element to making sure they work safely.
How far back will they come on New Britton Road?
The signs?
Yeah.
It varies, it depends on which sign we're talking about. It could be, what, anywhere from 100 to 200 feet?
250, 500, depending on the type of sign. So like you're talking about like roundabout ahead type signs? That'd be like 250, 300 feet back from the intersection.
The minimum is 200.
You have to talk to the microphone.
Did you need me to say it again?
He has to go to the microphone.
The minimum is 250 feet.
It's, it's not, it's.
Not for them, it's for the television. You're being, you've got to talk for the.
The minimum is 250 feet for a sign, for a warning sign. So now, depending on where that sign is.
Now, you go back to the microphone.
Depending where the sign is, you would, will have, you know, either, there, there's things that we have to look at when we go to post a sign. So if there's a utility pole that may block the view of that sign, then we'll move it further back in front of that utility pole so that the sign can be seen. So there's different field conditions that may, or that may move that sign further than 250 feet, but it wouldn't be any closer than 250 feet.
I, I think the other part of your question, if I remember from before, is how far back on New Britton Road will the road be worked on? So if there was a way you could reduce the hill for?
Sorry to interrupt. Yes, the limits would be stopped, at least at this point, before your driveway, so there wouldn't be no work to the west. Your driveway's right underneath the A in Britton, correct?
Right underneath what? Oh, yeah.
Right there?
Uh, that might be the Pico one, I'm not sure.
Right here.
I think it might be that one.
Are you on, you're not on the corner, that was.
No, that's Matt. And then there's a Pico driveway.
No, that's the Pico, isn't it?
On the next one. But the problem I have is when I'm coming out, to the left of, to the left of me is where the hill crests, and I can't always see people depending on how fast they're coming, and they can't see me. And I'm still, I almost got hit the other day trying to come out. I actually almost got hit coming down 611 and making the right on the New Britton. The person coming, who crossed there from Sowerman, like kept on going. Like they didn't even realize there was a stop sign there.
Bernadette, just to reiterate, there's no work being proposed in front of your driveway to reduce that crest vertical curve at this time. The, the intersections is what we're focusing on. What you'll see is a benefit in the queuing from a stop control to the yield control. So the queuing will be less, and there'll be less backups or chance of a backup into your driveway.
Okay. Can I somehow request that a hidden driveway sign be put near my property?
Yeah, I, I, that I think would be the town's responsibility, and we can look into that, and we can do that.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, we could look at that and do that now.
Okay, thank you.
We will do that.
All right, thank you. Other comments, questions?
Yes, hi, Peter Dubrow, property owner. This map looks a little bit old. My parking lot is on 1943 Southeast and just at the southern bound of what we see here. So slightly affected by this traffic diversion as a result of this project. What, what is being proposed to bring business owners and property owners into the preliminary design part of this project so that nobody is neglected and, you know, all our thoughts are being heard?
Yeah, you also came to the mic last time, I remember, and that's one thing that we spend a lot of time, is looking at the access points and the constructability aspects. So we usually have a public meeting and a stakeholder meeting prior to us getting into the complete details. But the, the goal is not to preclude any business owner or homeowner in the process, so we would be willing and able to, to listen to any concerns or comments you have. But we're not, we're not there yet. We need to get buy-in from the township before any of this can proceed.
And real quick, why was the, you know, reduction in the speed limit not part of this process? It seemed like, you know, coming up the road there, 45 mile per hour, you know, coming into an intersection seems an unreasonable amount of speed for the area. It seemed like that in itself could have reduced some of these accidents.
Part of it is, there's been some studies and some for or against, but just changing the speed limit doesn't always have user compliance, especially people who are used to going 45 miles an hour. You can change it to 25, but you don't always get the, the speed savings. So you may get the slower speeds, but you may have the same types of crashes, but the severity would be reduced. But this really addresses the whole problem holistically about reducing the types of conflicts, reducing the speeds of those conflicts and so forth.
And I also live off of Sowerman, and I'm just, and I go through that intersection quite regularly, and I could just imagine coming up to this circle and having to turn my head all the way to the left to see, you know, any cars potentially coming around that, you know, roundabout.
So, so Peter, one of the things that we do to provide advanced warning is, or visual cues, is you can see here, we've created a, almost like a reverse curvature here. This is also has a raised monovalle median, and so that cues the driver, advises the driver that they're approaching a roundabout. So these are some of the ways that the studies have shown to slow people down ahead of time rather than enforcing some sort of speed limit reduction prior to. So, so that would, that is one way that we are addressing that speed reduction. And then, again, it's being curbed, so you just physically wouldn't be able to drive. And then, again, it's being curbed, so you just physically wouldn't be able to drive. And then we have the advanced warning signs on the approach.
Yeah, my question was, was more about the, kind of the angle, the way these two come together, and the amount you'll have to kind of turn your head to see oncoming traffic.
Yeah, we call it a phi angle, and that is the head turn. And what we want is, we want the vehicles to have their nose pointed in the correct direction. So as you're at the yield bar, waiting for a gap, you're on Sowerman, right here.
Are you talking about approaching it from the?
Yeah, the first, the first one that you were showing, right there, right there, yep.
So it's the phi angle. It's optimal, it's a fine line between head turn and getting your nose pointed in the right direction. So we're looking at, it's not like you're looking over your left shoulder. It's a very mild left head turn. And your nose is pointed towards the entry, so you aren't turning your wheel as you're accelerating out of the yield condition.
Just, the reason I brought this slide up is if this models, if you're the person in that red car, this is how far you'd, you'd have to look in advance based off of the approaching conflicting cars, so the northbound cars. This is how far you'd have to see in advance to avoid colliding with that individual. So you imagine yourself in that red car looking left. That angle on that bottom red line is approximately how far you'd be turning to the left in order to see an oncoming vehicle. So it wouldn't be like you're looking all the way down the road to see this person. Because they're decelerating, having their foot on the brake, how far you have to look down now shortens.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick regarding the speed, if the municipality puts in a request, PennDOT will definitely study a speed reduction.
Thank you. I saw another hand. Please come forward.
Hi, my name's Kelly Galardi. I was just wondering if the gentleman could repeat the name of the roundabout that could be looked up on YouTube. I believe you said it was in Fairfax, Virginia?
If there's a wifi here, I could actually bring it up.
Okay.
Just go to YouTube and type Dogbone Roundabout.
Dogbone.
Dogbone Roundabout.
Roundabout. And you said there's an, almost.
There's plenty of them. You will see how the traffic moves, how pedestrians move, how bicycles move.
Wonderful. Thank you. Anybody else?
Okay, hearing none. What do you need from us tonight, gentlemen?
I think we're looking for a full endorsement of the project so we can begin moving forward. If that's not the case, I don't want to speak for the district, but we have plenty of other candidates that we're willing and able, and we've lost valuable time, obviously, but we're looking for your endorsement.
Yeah, we're, we're at the point now where we need to have the township's endorsement. So if, if at the end of tonight we don't have any kind of endorsement or something to make us want to, to look for, then we'll be starting to look for another project to build this roundabout.
I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the project. Is there a second?
I was going to ask a different question. Do you need the endorsement tonight or this week? Is there, I would like to.
It doesn't have to be tonight.
Okay.
We are looking to have something to tell us.
Understood, and we need to provide some direction.
Yeah, exactly. When, when we started looking at this, let's not forget that the municipality asked us to come out and look at the intersection. So before the low-cost safety was completed, it was the township that called us, PennDOT, and asked us to look at, at the intersection. We understand, I want to make a correction, that we're not saying that this intersection is one of the most high inter, crash intersections in the state. It is not. It is not even one of the high, this crash intersections in our district. What it is, is we looked at intersections that we could do the roundabouts at, that we thought we had municipality backing that would be able to be built in a certain amount of time that would give us the reduction in crash that we're looking for. So that's kind of how it, it started. It wasn't necessarily that it was a high-crash location. If it was, we certainly want to be at New Britton and Sowerman. Now, with that said, there are locations that, you know, we can look at now. I, I want you to know that we're also studying, kind of like what Mike said about, we're looking at I-95 and 452. We're looking at that as, so just so you know, that's very high volume. And it's at the top of the ramps at I-95 and 452 if you ever travel in Delaware County. Where we're even closer to building one is at Trichester Avenue and 95.
That's fine. I would, I have some questions and stuff. I'd like to review with the chief and Dave, and I just want to have a better feel for it yet, so.
Sure. Yeah, no, it doesn't have to be tonight. I apologize.
Well, I think it's fair to say it's well-received. We don't know what we're going to do yet, but it's well-received at this point. And I really appreciate, we all appreciate, the effort you went to to bring this in such an orderly and scientific and well-presented fashion. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Alright, safe, safe travels home. Does anybody need to say anything more?
Thank you very much. I'm from the rural area, and I, as I'm driving to the site in your town and looking at this building, signals don't belong in this town. Roundabouts belong in this town.
I'm sorry, there was too much noise.
Signal, signalized intersections are not part of this town. It should be more about roundabout, continuous flow of traffic, less pollution. Think about the future. Think about kids walking around. Signals offer false hope. That's my story of the life. I'm from the rural area. This is what I saw while driving here. I felt rural, but then I saw a signal. Bah, it doesn't belong here.
Gotcha.
And we have a copy of the presentation.
It's up to you. You live here. It's your judgment. But please, look at Dogbone Roundabout on YouTube. Educate yourself. Make a recommendation. Whatever is good for you, that's what you should go with.
Thank you very much.
And we'll send a copy of the presentation. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Safe travels home, everybody.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, everyone. The next item on the agenda is Bucks County Historical Society Font Hill Woodland Project.
Hello. There we go. Thank you very much. I've learned I will talk into the microphone, I promise. My name is Kyle McCoy, and I am the Executive Director and President of the Bucks County Historical Society. This is Laura Byersmith. She is our Vice President of Development. The Bucks County Historical Society, for those of you who don't know who we are, we run the Mercer Museum and Font Hill Castle. There are three Mercer buildings in this township. Well, one is in the township, one is in the borough, and one is owned by the county, so we're kind of spread all over the place. Font Hill Castle is what we are here to talk about tonight. It is a national landmark as well as, the Mercer Museum is also. It was designed by Henry Mercer. The final building was finished in 1912. And like I said today, we operate both the Mercer Museum and Font Hill Castle. I arrived on the, at the position in 2017. I have spent the majority of my life working for very large statewide historical associations. And one of the things that attracted me to this job in the first place was the sense of community and how unique this area is, as well as the castles. Not everybody gets to say they have castles. So what I did when I first arrived was take a look at everything that had been going on. And of course, in the history business, in the museum business, deferred maintenance is everywhere, and that's what we had to start doing. So we took a big assessment. It took us about a little over a year to do an assessment on all the properties, on all of the buildings, on the collections, on everything that we hold. And from there, we started prioritizing things. We were able and very, very fortunate to mobilize a lot of the community to help us with the first parts of the prioritized list. At Font Hill, it was not only the castle itself, it was the woodlands that surround it. We are sitting on 60, about 69 acres, right in the middle of the township and the borough. And so it was very visible, and we had a lot of neighbors, we had a lot of small businesses, arborists and landscape companies that came forward to offer help on us getting a little more.
This is an image that we see every day in our community. Plastic bags thrown into the environment where they tangle in trees, strangle animals, and drift in our waters. This is an ever-growing crisis that is not only affecting our environment, but the world's. Hi, I'm Rob Knoll, and I am here to teach you about this ever-budding crisis. There's a plentiful amount of information that I will cover in this program that you might or might not know. So come along and join me as I dig deep into this ever-growing crisis. Between 500 million and 1 trillion plastic bags are consumed all over the world each year. They are cheap to produce, sturdy, plentiful, and easy to carry and restore heavy loads like groceries at the supermarket, clothes at the department store, or even the packets.
...using the land, so I felt that it really wasn't that safe at the time. We have a lot of problems with downed trees, and what the arborists tell me is called a widowmaker, branches that are stuck in the top of the trees that can fall down at any time. One of the other things that we did then was, there's a little house in the woods. It's made about 1750s, 1760s, as far as we can tell, made out of stone, quarried from the ground right there. And it had been decades of, of just, we didn't take care of it. And it was graffitied, the woods had grown around it, and it was probably the best place ever to go do anything bad that you wanted to do and not get caught. Again, we had a local company out of Hatfield that volunteered, Esca Blast. They volunteered all of their time, all of their equipment, all of the materials to remove the graffiti. We had neighbors that helped us actually do it, and then we put up a couple security cameras so we could kind of keep an eye on it. And just as a side note, we know that it's working because as the kids were going back, they're going in front of the camera, so they know they're there, but we haven't been tagged since. So that's another good thing. We also established Font Hill Woodlands Task Force and have hosted so many things through this task force. Cleanups, our first cleanup was our first Earth Day, and we had 40 people signed up and 96 people showed up to help us clean the woodlands. So we have a lot of community support in that way. But now, we are looking to the future. We have bigger problems that we need to solve. And one of the things that we did was invite our Pennsylvania representatives to the museum. We took them to Mercer, the Font Hill, and to our off-site storage. And at the end of it, Senator Santa Sierra's office was saying, "Well, what do you need from us?" And I said, "I need help identifying money. I need help in identifying some grants that we could go after." And so, I don't know, I've heard it called two things, RACP and RCAP. I'm not even really sure how to, how to pronounce it. But he sent the information to us, and we are planning on putting in this grant for the renovation and rehabilitation, infrastructure and construction. There are a lot of things that we need, and we're talking multimillion dollars. The deal, though, with this, and what I'm hoping to get some help from the township, is we can't do it as a nonprofit. It has to be a government entity. And it has been suggested that we work with the county or the township. And I would much prefer to work with the township because Font Hill is in the township. That's the majority of where we are. There's a little sliver, you know, that's the borough, and then the portion of the tile works that is actually owned and run by the county. So that's what we are here for today. I brought Laura here because she knows way more about the process than I do. I'm just looking at the business part of the museum itself. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'll speak for Laura. So is she.
I think the board should understand that this is not a financial commitment on behalf of the township. It's really a vehicle for the Historical Society to proceed with the application.
Understood.
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, that is correct. We have to submit through the state. We need a governing municipality to be on the form. But the organization is responsible for fulfilling all the paperwork. The funds come through the state. And then we have to raise the money as a private nonprofit to match it.
And the payout is through the municipality?
Correct.
We hold the funds.
Correct.
We get that.
So the Doylestown Township would in essence receive the money from the state if we were approved for this, because we will be competing with a number of other organizations who will try to get the RACP money as well. RACP stands for the Redevelopment Capital Assistance Budget Program through the state. So that's what we would be doing. And yes, we would be filling out all the paperwork. We would be doing all the private fundraising.
Alright, thanks. I think we had no enough. Yes? Is there a motion to approve this?
I'll go, I'll go to approve.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
You have our support. All in favor?
Thank you so much.
Hi.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the community for everything that you've done to help us too and support us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Bye, Laura. It's good to see you.
Good to see you.
Okay, that's good work. Alright, any other public comment at this point? Alright, announcements. The next meeting of this board is Tuesday, October 15th at 5:00 p.m. We're also going to have a Ways and Means and Budget Work Session at 3:00 p.m. on Tuesday, October 15th. Everyone is welcome to attend. Please do come. Doylestown Township Administrative Offices will be closed for Columbus Day, which is Monday, October 14th. Yard and Leaf Recycling is, continues on the third Saturday of each month, 9:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m. The drop-off site is the New Britton Road access to Central Park. Kids Castle is going to open, they say, in mid, mid-October, right, Dave Tompo? Mid-October. Wait for it, wait for it. We're waiting for it. Volunteer opportunities, get involved. October 19th at 9:00 a.m. to 11:00. The invasive plant garden, I mean, invasive plant identification is going to go on and removal of such plants at the native plant garden. This is a free event, and you can register online at doylstownpa.org. That's October 19th at 9:00 a.m. to 11:00. Great way to see the beautiful garden and get your hands nice and dirty. Good work. QPR training for suicide prevention. QPR is Question, Persuade, and Refer. QPR training for suicide prevention is going to be presented by the Bucks County Suicide Prevention Task Force, and it's going to be held here on October 24th, 5:30 to 7:30. Please come. It's real important work. That's October 24th, 5:30 to 7:30, and it's something we can all do. We can all help with this. And the EAC and Heritage Conservancy will host the Old Growth Forest Network and dedicate, to dedicate Harts Woods. That's Saturday, November 2nd at 1:00 p.m., and you park at the New Britton entrance to Central Park. That's the EAC and Heritage Conservancy hosts the Old Growth Forest Network. November 2nd, 1:00 p.m. in Central Park. Radios, and then we have Christmas coming up, everybody. Radio City Christmas Spectacular, November 25th. It's $135 per person, and you leave from Central Park. The seats are filling up fast. So if you're interested, contact doylstownpa.org for registration and details. And the next item on the agenda is the minutes approval from the minute of a regular meeting, September 17th, 2019. Go to approve. Okay. Any changes, corrections?
I think on page three and page 11, the vote total doesn't reflect. I think it should be 4-0-1 and 4-0-1 because of an abst, abstention and not just 4-0. Page three and page 11.
Page 11 is correct, isn't it?
I don't have it right in front of me, but I'm, there's two spot, check page 10, then I. I'll get it in front of me.
Page, on page 11, the vote was, motion was adopted 4-1 with Mrs. Lyons abstaining.
So it wouldn't be 4-1.
4-0-1.
Okay, that, you can fix that.
And, and the page three was similar.
Okay, thank you. Anything, any other corrections that you see? Any other corrections that you see? All right, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
With those corrections, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Rick. All right, next item on the agenda, correspondences, we see none. Oh, I beg your pardon. Also, minutes, we need minutes' approval for the budget work session on September 17th, 2019.
I'll make that motion too.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, corrections? No, all in favor?
Aye.
And on to correspondences, we see none. Report from the solicitor?
Nothing to report tonight, members of the board.
Chief?
Yeah, Sergeant Jones is here to promote a project that he's been spearheading within the department.
I didn't hear what you just said.
Sergeant Jones is here tonight to promote a project that he's been spearheading.
Great. Sergeant?
Get up here to the microphone. Thank you to the chief and to the members of the board for a few minutes to speak with you here tonight. My name is Scott Jones, I am a sergeant with the Police Department.
Sergeant, Sergeant, he needs you to speak closer into the microphone.
How's that? Perfect. Since 2013, we have sent multiple officers to a 40-hour crisis intervention training course sponsored by the Lenape Valley Foundation. The focus of this course is to teach first responders, including police officers, to identify and interact with those with special needs. This can be a child that suffers, is autistic, it could be an elderly gentleman with dementia, or just somebody that is confined to a wheelchair. In an effort to expand our training, we are initiating a campaign to become proactive in identifying those people who may have special needs in the advance of a crisis. We have created this form, which will be available on our social media pages, which can be completed and filled out and forwarded to our department. That information will be kept in a confidential file. Participation in the program is completely voluntary. You can provide as little and/or as much information as you believe is relevant. The form will contain information specific to that individual to assist officers who may come in contact with that individual both in and/or outside of their home. It will also contain information that will assist officers with locating the individual if he or she becomes missing. This information then can be forwarded up to the Bucks County Radio Room, where we can enter that information into what we call a premise warning. Anytime a first responder, police, fire, EMS is dispatched to that specific residence, that important information is placed on each one of the laptops or the mobile Datal terminals that each of the responding units have. This information is definitely crucial in times of crisis and can dramatically affect the outcome of an incident. I do have permission to speak about an example that I have. A few years ago, we have a resident that is wheelchair-bound, and she is prone to falling. So because of this, she would let her front door in her apartment complex unlocked all the time. So my fear was that she'd be the victim of a crime, or somebody would try to take advantage of her. So along with her, her family, and the apartment complex, we were able to get her a Realtor lockbox. She put a spare key in there and provided us with the code. We gave that code to the county, which in turn we placed that into what we call the premise warning, and we've been out several times there, we've been able to utilize that and get in without breaking the door in, or obviously she's allowed to lock, and she's able to lock her door now. So that's kind of the information there. This is the form here that will be available, and that's all I have.
That's great, Sergeant Jones. I have a quick question. Would this be useful to a family who has a child that's struggling with opioids or something else like that, that you would need to have, they could give you this information? We have a child-
I think any information is valuable to us. If we're able to make a decision based on as little information as we have, we might be able to change the outcome of that event.
Thank you. Is there a question?
I think you kind of answered it. We have a son who has a serious profound mental illness, and sometimes if he goes off his meds, the police get called. You didn't mention that as a criteria. Could we put him in there as well?
This is anything from, and that's a perfect example there. Anything that you as a family member think is important?
Yeah.
We think it's important.
Because one time, he got a DUI for being psychotic, and he lost his license and so forth, so.
And that's something too, that you can contact our department, we can have a conversation and see what the best course of action is.
That's a good plan, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions for Sergeant Jones?
I do. So who would be able to submit to submit this information? Would it be family members? If somebody's over 18, would they be able to know if they're in this database and pull their information out?
I think it's, you know, it could be anybody from a family member to, you know, anybody over the age of 18. If they're juvenile, obviously it would be the parent's responsibility to get a hold of us, but yeah, it would be like a parental guardian, per se.
I think in most instances, we're going to be looking for a parent or legal guardian. It's not to say that we will not accept something from a non-family member, because information is valuable to us. We just have to be delicate with the information comes from somebody that's outside the family or a legal guardian.
Well, the person whose information is submitted, if it's not submitted by them, from themselves, or by somebody who's a legal guardian, would they be aware that that information would be on file?
One more time, I'm sorry.
Say somebody's 20 years old, has a mental health issue, but they are independent, they're living on their own, they're doing what they need to do, and a relative submitted this information about them, would they be able to see their own information?
That would be privileged information. There's certain information, it's called intelligence information, that we would not release to anybody. It's information that's provided us, it could be anonymous, it could be a family member, it could be a distant relative, it could be a neighbor down the street. We would not be releasing that information to anybody for fear of retaliation.
Sounds great, thank you so much. This is really good work. Thank you, Sergeant.
You're welcome, thank you.
Anything else, chief?
Nothing else.
Engineer?
I have nothing for this evening.
All right, Director of Operations?
Yes, you have in your packet a change order for the administration building, Phase Two construction, Penn Builders Change Order Number 11. This change order was tabled, well, actually it was approved impartiality back on the August 20th Board of Supervisors meeting, because there were some items in question. I think those items were addressed, I spoke with Mr. Snyder, and I'd like to have you basically come back and re-approve this in its totality. Change order number 11 totaled $16,654.43. This is not a new change order, it was just had some items in question. There are no new change orders or any items that we were bringing before you. We are finished, there's nothing additional. I just need to have this signed off on and move forward.
Ken, you want to speak to this?
No, this is, this is good work, like Dave mentioned, we didn't approve it in total before. We approved the work, and so the work is basically done, so we need to get this approved. And it's not new, it was an old one that we're bringing through.
Care to make the motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. You have another one, Dave?
Yes, I have, basically, I need your acknowledgement for our participation in the 2019-2020 Sodium Chloride Road Salt Co-Stars Contract. Back in March, we notified Penn that we would participate in the Pennsylvania Department General Services Co-Stars Contract for Road Salt. We identified that we would be purchasing approximately 1,200 tons. By contract or by agreement, we are required to legally purchase at least 60% of that tonnage we identified, which is 720 tons, and we can purchase up to 140%, which is 1,680 tons, for our winter road maintenance. Morton Salt was the low bidder for Bucks County, and at a cost of $554.69 per ton. So I'm just asking for the board's acknowledgement, so we have this documented.
It really is Morton Salt?
It is Morton Salt, yeah.
Iodized or not?
Yeah.
All right, is there a motion to approve the awards through Morton Salt for the-
It's just an acknowledgement that we are participating in this all program, so I just-
We don't need to prove it?
The board's acknowledgement of that, and yes, it's not an award. We've already indicated we're going to participate.
We're all good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's funny. Manager?
Yes, every year, we like to give you guys the schedule for the coming year and what we would anticipate. I want to make sure that you have it at this time. If we want to look at any other dates or change anything, I would at this time suggest kind of reviewing this, asking any questions, seeing just the holidays, and budget work session schedules and things like that. And then, as we move forward into the reorganization meeting, we can incorporate this into the advertisements and stuff.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Stephanie. We'll take a look, everyone take a look. We don't have to do it now. It's the same every year almost, except PSATs is in May instead of April. There are a couple corrections, but we can, okay. Anything else?
No, that's all I have at this time.
Supervisors, Jen?
So we had interviewed before our last meeting, I believe it was our last meeting, Kevin Kane for the Parks and Rec. He was appointed at our last meeting to Kids Castle, but I would also like to move to appoint Kevin Kane to the Parks and Rec Committee.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Anything else?
The EAC hosted a region-wide kickoff to the Ready for 100 Program. Ready for 100 Program is a program that municipalities and other governmental organizations are getting involved in, that are having, that are, they're looking to move to 100% renewable energy within a certain period of time, 2035, 2050, depending on some definitions. But again, our EAC has been one of the leaders in the environmental programs in the area, and I just want to acknowledge their hard work.
Thank you. Ken, you have anything?
Nothing tonight, no.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like the board to know that, as it got in your package, the Visioning Meeting took place here, and I was happy, I mean, the response I thought was great. There were 30 residents across the spectrum of ages and heavily involved. Boucher and James, I thought, did a great job. They were able to elicit, get a good feedback from what our residents are looking for. And also, staff was there, and Jen, and Ken and myself were there, so it was a full room, and it was very heartening to see everybody involved for this type of meeting. That's it.
Ryan?
Nothing for me tonight.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, unfinished business for the Pebble Ridge Wood Ridge Sewer Study.
I should say it's a project now, it's already been studied.
Okay, as we discussed previously, my name is John Butler, I'm Chief Operating Officer for BCWSA. And in doing the construction in the lower part of the project, which is in the green area, several months back, we experienced significant rock coming through the both property, as well as up through the easement between Militia Hill and Alms House Road. In looking at the pouring logs and the interpolation of those logs by the engineer, we determined that we're going to have to pre-drill at least portions of Alms House Road and Militia Hill, mainly at their peaks and down the hill where the deepest cuts of manholes would be. In talking about that, we thought the idea should be explored about a low-pressure system for both of those legs of the lines. There was already low pressure above Alms House, there was already a portion of low pressure in Militia Hill, so it seemed like something that was worth looking into. We met with the residents back in August, we talked about it, we basically gave them our rationale behind it, and did explain to them, and they understood that there was additional cost, which obviously, nobody wants additional cost, but it was about $3,000 a house for the affected residents, and additional cost for private, the private portion of the work. Some of those folks, we believe, would spend that additional cost anyway with rock, but some of them may not. It's really kind of going to be one of those things you won't know until you do it. So that said, we basically decided that we would look at the cost differential. We asked everybody at the August meeting if they would look, you know, talk to their plumber and see what their individual site would require, whether it be gravity or low pressure. We sent out last week, I guess it was last Wednesday, we sent out to everybody through the email chain, the cost differential, which for Militia Hill, up here you can see is about $70,000 of cost savings if you switch from gravity to low pressure, and then about $100,000, so it's about, excuse me, $170,000 total if you switch from gravity to low pressure for these two legs. That would give the overall project, the public portion, not the private portion, about a $680 reduction. The downside is that these affected residents would still have the additional cost of the grinder pumps if they don't have rock. So basically, what we did also in that email was, we wanted to do kind of an informal poll. I asked everyone that was in the email chain to tell us yes or no, you would like us to make the change, or no, you do not. I received zero yes votes, just as a matter of information. So basically, we're here tonight to just ask the question if the supervisors want us to proceed with the low pressure, or to drop the issue and just drop back to the gravity with the pre-drilling that we were going to do in the first place.
I mean, I would just, I would just go based off of the responses from the residents, like there's not one who responded was in favor of this.
No, and honestly, I was caught off guard by that. I didn't realize it was going to be such an overwhelming, no.
I also was surprised, I thought two or three at least, but 15 to zero was kind of surprising to me also. So I also would recommend that you, Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority build it as we approved and designed. And just one other comment, because I got some feedback over the last few months, this was a long, drawn-out, laborious, but, I mean, that's what we do, we get everybody's input, we have meetings, we bounce back between the staff, et cetera, so, yeah, it was time-consuming and a little contentious at times, but I think that's our job, so thanks for being patient with us.
Mr. Porter, do you have something to say? Mr. Porter?
Yeah.
Do you have something to say?
No, I think it's all very clear.
Okay.
It's very strong opinion, that the residents want a gravity system, not a pressure system.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
All right, so I-
Mr. Butler, do you want to motion? I'm sorry.
So, my name is Jim Radigan, I live at 80 Militia Hill Road, and I've been not at all included in any of your communications, so I'd like to understand exactly what's going on. My understanding is, first of all, what is a low-pressure system?
A low-pressure system is a pump, small pump system that would be on your property, that your septic system now would drain into. It's usually about a 100-gallon tank with a pump in it that's pressurized and will pump it out to the street. So basically, instead of flowing gravity, it pumps, so it has an electric connection with an alarm on it. But the low-pressure line it pumps to the street is a small, two-inch diameter line, so the pressure from the pumps that are attached to it allow it to push it down that small diameter line.
All right, and there'll be check valves, et cetera?
Correct, there are check valves, correct. They're built into the pump system themselves.
So why is it, is it true that not all of the homes on Militia Hill Road are going to be subject to having a gravity-fed system?
That's correct, I believe there's six.
Why exactly is that?
I'm not, I don't know firsthand, but I believe that's to do with an easement that was not able to be obtained from one of the residents to allow everyone to get gravity, but I don't know the details.
All right, my confusion, I guess, is that I talked to one of the representatives from Gilmore about a year ago, and that, in combination with the test borings that were done, caused me to think that the presence of rock should not be a surprise to anyone.
It's not a surprise, it's just we're hitting it at such density that our equipment cannot break it, it has to be pre-drilled. That was the part that we did- That was the part that we didn't anticipate. We know there's rock. I mean, we're hitting blue rock right now on Stony Lane because the cuts are 10 to 15 feet. We know we're going to hit rock, but when we hit the dense, blue, hard rock, I can't even get a pecker machine to get through it. We have to bring in a driller. That was the whole reason we started this.
Part of my confusion is, there's 15 homes built there, all of which have very deep basements.
Mr. Radigan, you really need to speak into the microphone.
I'm sorry. There are 15 homes on Militia...
And do you have a question?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a question?
I do. All of those homes have deep basements. Builders had no problem. We, you guys installed, or somebody installed, a gravity-fed storm sewer system. So I don't understand why a gravity-fed system can't be applicable to all of the homeowners. I frankly consider, consider the alternative here as being suboptimal. And I'm curious as to what alternatives were considered.
I don't know. We just, we're the, BCWSA is just the contractor. If you're talking about design issues, I don't have those answers.
Okay. Who can I talk to about design issues?
I would assume the township and the engineer that handled it. But I can say this, the topography of the roadway has a lot to do with where the gravity sewer goes. And I know that if you had easements through some of the properties, you could drain both sides of Militia Hill. Because Militia Hill crests at the top.
I understand. I understand where it's at.
Drops to the back. That's the reason.
Isn't there an easement, isn't there an existing easement that was obtained in connection with the storm sewer system?
The storm sewers are only about four or five feet deep. They're not, and the deepest cut on Militia Hill, at the bottom of that hill, the deepest manhole, I think, is like 14 feet. That's, that's the difference. And as you crest the hill, in order to get people all the way in the back, if we were to go through just the roadway, you'd probably be 20-plus feet down at the top of the hill where the biggest crest in the road is.
Is this something that's still being considered?
No, it was, after we got the contract, it was, that was already taken care, that was already assumed that those folks would be low-pressure.
All right, well, one alternative might be to just discontinue it for those homes that you're going to be forcing to use this suboptimal system.
I can't make that choice.
No.
All right, so I guess I need to talk to someone else on this.
This has been approved by DEP and everything.
Probably a story for a different day, right?
One person talking at a time, so don't talk, Ms. Mason will speak next.
I mean, at this point in time, Gilmore designed the system, and there were areas within the project that were designed initially with low pressure. And those, we have not changed that plan. That plan has been reviewed by DEP, approved by Penn Vest for the loan that we got as well, by their DEP. This was just a small group that we were looking at un-modifying. And I think it's very clear the decision is not. But I don't, would not recommend to the board to go back and do any redesign to slow this project down and have to go back to DEP or anything like that at this point in time.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Christine Rhine-Miller. I live on 19 Forge Row. We are impacted by this. Can you tell me rather exactly what this is going to cost us in additional fees? They have this...
The public, you mean the private portion, or the, the public portion will remain the same for everyone in the project. The private portion is about $3,000 more than average for gravity sewer versus low pressure. But if you're on Forge Row, that was designed originally, so I didn't, for us, that's just what you were going to get in the first place.
Well, we've been told with several communications from the township that the project costs would be shared equally amongst the 252 properties for the installation of the pump station and that everybody would pay their fair share. I don't see how this is equal. 252 properties? And we're supposed to bear the additional brunt of this when we got other communication telling us that everything was planned and we're looking real good here? Well, apparently, that's not so. I find this presumptuous, that we should incur this additional financial cost. The people that you were talking about, we're in our 70s and 80s. We're on fixed incomes. We're retired. We're supposed to cough up this additional money? By the way, I was not notified of the August meeting. I wasn't even notified about tonight. I was on email chain. So something...
Again, you weren't notified because you were already designed as low-pressure. So there wasn't an option for you to change. You were already low-pressure.
And the other thing is, is if your system's working, there's no requirement for you to connect to the system.
Our septic system is working.
Okay, then you don't have to connect...
Well, we were told that we had to.
No, you don't have to. You do not, it's optional to connect in and incur the private costs.
Oh, oh, to connect?
Connect.
But we're part of the whole project.
You're paying for the line in the street. Everyone is sharing equally for the public portion for the line in the street.
And that was...
Private costs are private costs, and that's the connection from the street to your home. That is optional if your system is working. If your system's not working, or you choose to connect, then you would have those private costs. And whatever those private costs are, people will run into rock on their own properties. They'll have other, you know, situations they may need to deal with regarding indoor plumbing and how the plumbing may have to be routed. I think one of the positive things is that we've been working with the Braylong property, which has been, received final plan approval, and they will be contributing towards the project as well pretty significantly. And those costs will be shown when we do billing, which probably won't be till then, sometime at the end of 2020, John?
Correct. I don't, I don't anticipate a bill going out until probably January 2021.
In short, the total cost per household is going to go down.
And it also, I'm sorry, the cost of the public portion also can be spread over 20 years. You don't have to pay it all upfront if you don't want to.
I understand that connection is a private cost, but we weren't given a choice to incur the $32,000 expense.
That's the line in this, the capped cost at 34 for the line in the street.
And whether we pay...
And what we're anticipating is, is that cost with the contribution from the Braylong property to be significantly reduced.
It hasn't changed.
And that hasn't changed from 2017, I believe.
Yeah.
That's the way it's been set since then.
Well, I do find this discriminatory.
Mr. Radigan?
So my understanding is that if our septic system is functional, that we do not have to connect to the system.
That is correct.
Is that correct?
It's optional.
In the event that the home is ultimately sold, does the connection have to be made at that point if the septic system is still functional?
No, it does not. You have to show us, you have to provide proof, however, that the system is still working at the time of sale.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, come on up.
If you'd like, I could give a little history about why those homes need the pressure system.
I don't know that we need that right now, but thank you. I think we're good.
Going back to 2015, excuse me, when the notices went out for easements, I had one, and I had a drawing of where the sewer line was going to come in back of my home. And the sewer line was coming down from a manhole that was on a cul-de-sac on Militia Hill, close to Forge Row. The sewer line, as proposed, came within a foot of my garage, the easement, and within about 10 feet of my swimming pool gate. So I thought if I agreed to that, that that would substantially reduce the value of my property to a prospective buyer who might want to expand the garage, build a pool house, or in fact, build a tennis court. So the township and my wife and I could not come to any agreement on that. And that's the reason that the line no longer comes down there and up into the, to meet the main line in the lower part of my property. But that's the reason, because we couldn't come to that agreement on that line.
There was more, one more comment, sir? Wait till you get to the microphone, and then identify yourself, please.
Okay. My name's John Prock. I live at 1030 Alms House. Just want to know, is the vote going to happen now and tonight? And is this our chance to present or say something about?
About what?
About the decision. Is the decision being made now?
We're not making decisions now, are we? They're just going to proceed with the plan as engineered.
I've been given the direction to stick with gravity.
It's sticking with gravity.
That, that's my understanding.
Yep.
Yes.
Is that good?
So that's been...
The whole, the whole plan that we were looking at is dropped.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
I don't think that needs a vote.
We didn't need a motion to change it.
I'll be quick. Unfortunately, we came into this late. The 20-year loan, we're some of the older people that are going to be selling. What happens to that loan if we sell? I mean, that's us? We have to pay it no matter what?
You would be satisfied at the time of sale. You can't go to the new owner, so you'll have to, it'll, through your process of closing costs, you'll settle it at that point.
All right, is that it? Okay.
Thank you, John.
All right, next item, we have zoning board applications. Taratowsky, say that right?
Taratowsky and Tarino, yes. My recommendation would be to leave both of these to the zoning hearing board.
So be it. And that's it, right? Anything else? All right. I hear let's dispense with the announcements again, so any other business?
We'll just add them to the minutes and put them in.
We'll add them to the minutes. We're adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. And good night. And good night.